Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We called the Mid-Mouth Meeting of Liberty County Board of Commissioners to order, hoping you can hear me clear through this mask. If not, I'll try to articulate better. Mr. Brown, has the meeting been properly advertised?
Yes, sir, it has. And just for the record, Commissioner Walden is attending by teleconference.
Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioner Walden. Commissioner Walden, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
I heard. I heard. All right, so good to have you here. Have you here. Oh, I didn't ask anybody. Can one of y'all lead us in our invocation?
I can.
You can? Let us stand now for our prayer and pledge of allegiance.
Yes, sir. Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we do thank you for the opportunity you give us to lead this county, Lord. I pray, Father, that as we come into our meeting this evening, that we would do the right thing, Lord. I thank you, dear Savior, for my fellow commissioners, those that are here, and those that are up by phone, and those that may not be attended today. I just prayed that we would continue to work together as one for the betterment of our community. Thank you for all the blessings that you have bestowed upon our county, Lord, in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Yes, sir. I miss Mr. Bob being back there.
Yeah.
On that pledge.
You got a cheap clip there.
I tell you what, you need to holler.
Yeah. He says I get on the mountaintop. All right. Gullah Gitchi Nation Appreciation Week. Does Queen check?
Ms. Quett is not. She's actually attending by Facebook Live.
Okay.
And so she won't be able to speak over that medium. I don't know. I'm asking, I'm going to, just to say anything if she has not. Maybe she will. We can signal before we get through. But this is a normal thing, the recognition that the board tries to do every year in honor of that. And for that, we have a proclamation that was disseminated to the board for consideration.
Do you agree, please, sir?
I will. Whereas Africans began arriving on the Sea Islands in the 1500s, and whereas the population of these Africans increased as chattel enslavement grew in the 1600s, and whereas these Africans began to engage with and in some instances created families with indigenous Americans in the region, and whereas the descendants of this group are called Gullah Gitchi, and whereas this group of self-sufficient people came together in 1999 throughout the Sea Islands and Low Country of the Carolinas, Georgia, and Florida to stand on their human right to self-determination, and whereas this group took one year to elect their own leader, and whereas they elected and instilled St. Helena Island native whose family's roots also stem from Polowana and Datwa Islands, Queen Quett, Chiefess of the Gullah Gitchi Nation, and whereas Queen Quett has served as the official head pande bodhi and spokesperson for Gullah Gitchi since July 2nd, 2000, and whereas the 20th anniversary of the Gullah Gitchi Nation is being celebrated under the theme, "Gullah Gitchi 2020," and whereas we support the continuation of Gullah Gitchi cultural heritage and sustainability of the Gullah Gitchi Nation. Whereas Gullah Gitchi Nation Appreciation Week begins in 2012, and whereas Liberty County annually joins with all other counties and cities of the Gullah Gitchi Nation, and this celebration is the home of Gitchi Kunda and the annual Riceboro Rice Fest, both contributing to the recognition and perseverance of the rich Gullah Gitchi culture in Liberty County. And whereas to show support, we're asking citizens and visitors to take part in the activities associated with these events, which are part of the global activities for the United Nations International Decade of People of African Descent. Whereas the theme for this year's celebration is Gullah Gitchi 2020, seeing weak culture clearly, and whereas Liberty County calls upon all of our citizens to celebrate with the citizens of the Gullah Gitchi Nation via virtual events and support of Gullah Gitchi businesses and institutions. Now therefore, I, Donald L. Lovett, Chairman, do hereby proclaim July 25th through August 1st as Gullah Gitchi Nation Appreciation Week in Liberty County.
All right. You said there was a comment submitted by her commissioner, did you saw?
Yes, she's on here.
She's on there.
Well, she's on here. She said, "Good evening, Liberty County Commissioners. Peace, Queen Quest."
East to here too, Queen.
You're trying to sound like a...
Oh, I love to see her.
Yeah. I saw on TV the other night.
Yeah.
All right. Queen, just so you'll see. There you go. So, thank you, Mr. Brown. We look forward to that every year, the Queen coming to see us.
Yes.
Yeah. Just kind of a celebrity of sorts. Engineering report, Mr. Long.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Fraser, hello, sir.
Hey.
Very good.
How you doing?
Sir, I'll be brief. The Isle of Wight Fire Station is pretty close to being done. The garage door opener got put in today. That's working really well. The road department is planning on getting out of there very soon and putting in a little more dirt and dressing up the yard and making it look right. The required site improvements are done as far as access goes. The stone is in place. The water well's in, the septic system's in. So it's pretty much ready until we finish up with the lawn. That'll make it look nicer. And I think we're planning to have a groundbreaking on it pretty soon. And we'll have a nice looking facility by then. The East End Fire Station, they are waiting on some roof panels to come in. COVID-19 has some of their materials flowed up. They're doing a little bit of work, but not much they can do till the panels get in to finish up the drying in the building. Now, Lewis Fraser Road is done. We're in the process of finishing up payment. Melvin Lane is...
Trent, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Trent, on that Lewis Fraser Road, you might want to check a few places. We had some washouts again, so you might want to check that.
Well, I'll be glad to get Andy to go out there tomorrow. We can get him to come back on their warranty work and fix that.
Okay. All right, good.
So that's not a problem. And they're working for us over on Third Street anyhow, so they've got people here.
Okay.
Melvin Lane, they've done a little bit of work over there. The telephone company has not moved the line yet. We had sent them an offer to pay to put the line in, and they had requested until Monday, close of business, Monday, the 20th. So next Monday is their deadline to be, to have it moved. So hopefully, they'll have that out of the way. Yes, sir. Okay. Sorry about that. Yeoman's Road, we have sent out plans on Yeoman's Road to all the utility companies to make sure we don't have any conflicts. Haven't gotten any word back from any utility companies that we have any real conflicts that we need to work on. Interstate Paper Road, it looks like on the 21st, we have a meeting out there to talk about Interstate Paper Road with the Development Authority, the DS Smith, as well as the city of Riceboro. Third Street is moving along well. I say well. We've been running into a lot of utilities out there. Comcast didn't locate any of their utilities, and so consequently, the contractor ended up cutting a lot of the lines, and Comcast is putting a lot of their stuff aerial. We've been working diligently with the water system. We knew we had issues with the water system going into it, and they've been in close contact with us as we're building it. So we've hit several lines, and they've been able to find some of their water lines. They didn't know where they were by virtue of us hitting them, but everything is moving along well on that. And then the only thing I really need to, well, let's see, I do have a couple of things to talk about. What about roadway acceptance? We're working with the city to get that letter from them on what they want to ask us to accept as part of their intergovernmental agreement, and then we'll bring that back to you with recommendations on the roads and how that works as soon as we get that together. Couple of things that are not on my agenda. We've been working about with Mr. Brown and Mr. Mosley and Jimmy Martin about some of their ADA access at some of our ballfields. We've been trying to hammer that down pretty well, and that's coming along pretty well. That's about it for tonight, unless anybody has any other questions.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I stepped. On the Interstate Paper Road, it's still at 9:30 Monday?
Yes, sir.
Is it Monday, Mr. Brown?
Let me look.
Monday or Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
It's on 21st. Erica put it on my calendar, so let me look to make sure. Yes, sir, 9:30. And we're doing it at the Riceboro Youth Center. We've got an open area.
Okay. Okay.
And what do you all hope to accomplish that this meeting?
What we're able to do now, and that we've passed T-Spots, we had a certain amount established in T-Spots that the county would be able to put toward the roadway. We're looking at DS Smith to see what they would contribute, and the city of Riceboro, what they would like to contribute for the road. And we're trying to get our funding together because we have about $2.5 million project, isn't that right, Joe? So, and we've got about $1 million in sales tax for it, or T-Spots money, so we need to come up with other to get that road fixed and back up and in good shape.
Mr. Brown, wasn't, what's her name, Karma, was spoken checking on something from out of Atlanta from the economic development side? Let's see what she can pull out.
Yes, sir.
Out of Atlanta to help us out on that road?
Yes, sir, absolutely. And so that's what we're hoping she'll bring back is a stimulus-type information from them to see if there's possibility of getting some of that through a grant. The other thing that the commission, along with the chief elected officials, would have to decide, even if that funding's determined, is what time the release of those funds would occur, because there's some other projects, you know, that are on the drawing board also.
Right, yeah.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Yes, sir. Timing is another issue we got to talk about.
And did you, I had a chance to check on what I called you about the other day on the weight limit?
I did forward that to Trent. I don't know whether you had a chance to check on that about the weight limit?
On the Interstate?
Well, on roads in general, local, local public roads as to what powers the local government authority may have to reduce or restrict weight limits.
Yes. I do have some information on that. I need to get back with you on that before I make a presentation on it. So we did pull some of that information.
Well, if you can't... If you can, have it, have some of it with you next week when we sit down to the table with the rest of them.
Okay. I can pull it together.
What about that subdivision over there? The sinkhole in the backyard?
Sinkhole in the backyard, that's...
And also the other picture that I sent you.
And the other one, down, it's down in the limit, down in the very back. Yes, sir. We're working on getting a patch in that road as well. But it is in the area that's in county maintained area, so it is something that we can fix.
Which one is in the county maintained area now, the?
The hole in the road.
The hole in the road.
The hole in asphalt. The hole in the backyard?
But also...
The hole in asphalt is a hole in asphalt. The hole in the backyard you can sink your truck into.
But also by that manhole cover, that manhole piece that sits in, you've got a deep hole right there.
Yes, sir.
So if we got a pipe over there in that lady's backyard that's failing, could it be that same kind of pipe that's over there on the side of that road that's failing too?
No, sir. The, the, there where the pothole is in the road is a lot of clay that was in there, and it got wet along the edge of the road, where we have the issues along the, beside the storm drain manhole that's in the road. That was an area that had some really deep sanitary sewer, and with the rain we've had this year, it's helped some of the land settle in that area, and so we've had a little bit of settling there. And I think that's going to take care of itself when we put some melons in it, well, not melons, we'll get some hot mix asphalt and fill in the packs and smooth it out, and it'll be fine.
I think we're talking about two different things. Maybe I sent you to, I didn't send you all the pictures that I had.
Okay.
One of them was when I sent you that man, that cover right on the curb, on the sidewalk?
Oh, the curb, we're sticking out a little bit.
Yeah, there's a hole, there's a sinkhole right there.
Yes, sir. The sinkhole beside it, I'll go back and look at that again, because I'll address that with you. The lid where it shifted a little bit is apparently somebody, when they were building the house, and even the sidewalk kicked it a little bit with a piece of equipment and moved it out where it sticks out off the face of the curb about that much. And the hole is an easy fix to...
Okay. All right.
Yeah, question for Mr. Long. All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. If you don't need me, I'm going to go.
I need to read. Yes, sir, thank you, sir. All right. Briar Bay Pavilion, Mr. Davis.
Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I just wanted to come back before the board and confirm that there is no evidence in the public real estate records that the county has ever had any interest in the Briar Bay property. Deeds that old are oftentimes notoriously vague. That's the case here. We did contact representatives of the Jones Estate, the Bryant Estate, and the paper companies, and based on our collective experience, it's everyone's opinion that the paper company still owns that little postage stamp of property in Briar Bay, although they may not realize that they own it. But again, that's not definite, but that's everyone's best educated guess at present.
Mr. Mar, has the paper company been paying the taxes, or were they exempt?
No, they weren't. The only evidence of county ownership is in the tax assessor's office, and for many years, the county, or the county recreation department, has been shown as the owner of the property. That's not the case.
Okay.
And so the property has been exempt from taxes based on that assumption for years.
So we're in the process of trying to get that cleared up and let the paper company own, let them know that they still own it?
Yes, ma'am. I was going to take direction from the board. Should the board wish to get involved and want to accept ownership, we could probably contact the paper company and make arrangements for its transfer. Like I said, it's not being used by the paper companies. I doubt if they have any use for the property, and so it could likely be easily transferred to the county or some other governmental entity for public purpose. But, you know, you've never had control of that property. I doubt if you'd want any now. So my intention was simply to contact the paper company, advise them of the findings, and let them take it from there.
Kelly.
Yes, sir.
Why can't it go back to the original state that it was in prior to this misconception of a recreation apartment, which was the Briar Bay community?
Well, I don't think, to my understanding, no one really knows how the use originated, or really what the intended use was. I've heard some anecdotal evidence from people who were at a dedication ceremony there, that Mr. Bryant dedicated it to the community for community purposes. And I'm not sure what its current use is, or what it has been for years. Now, to the extent there's been ongoing, consistent, notorious use of the property, people may have some sort of prescriptive title to the property. But the only way you can establish rights to a property in cases like this oftentimes is by mutual agreement with all the stakeholders, potential stakeholders, or by quiet title action in a court. So I couldn't advise anyone to make use of the property without confirming who actually has the benefit of the property and title to the property.
So who is the actual, according to what you found, who is the owner of it?
The owner is the paper company. I think the current, it's been transferred to, over the years, to successive paper companies. I think the current holder, at least based on our assumptions, is a warehouser. I believe they're not a local paper company, a larger national paper company.
But there's no actual proof of that, that they still own it?
Well, you know, the good thing about public real estate records is oftentimes, things are very definite. You have surveys that are very clear, there are no ambiguities, but oftentimes, these older deeds, especially paper company deeds, the plats reference, you know, natural boundaries, they were oftentimes incomplete or inaccurate, and that's the case here. It's just, it's very difficult to determine what property was transferred at what point to what entity. But based on conversations with representatives of the different entities that I mentioned, including Mr. Fleming Martin, who's an attorney in Brunswick and was an heir of the Jones Estate, who also represented me, the paper companies in the area. His law firm has a library with paper company plats and other records, and based on his review of those records, he's fairly confident that the paper company is the owner as well. But of course, he couldn't give his opinion based on those uncertainties that I mentioned.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, and I'm glad that we know that it's not ours, if you care. I'm glad that we know that it's not ours, and that's, that kind of takes us out of it. But, you know, I do want to say that, you know, last month, we made a motion, and it was approved unanimously, to clean up the site, because we were under the impression that it was ours. I mean, you know, if it's not ours, then that motion to clean it up shouldn't have been made. But now that we know that it's not ours, you know, I guess we just wash our hands off. But the point is, and we'll never know because that didn't happen, but had we went forward with that motion, then we could have went in there and did something on private property, which is something that the county shouldn't be doing. But on the other hand, had we voted to renovate it, we'd have been there hammering nails and putting up two-by-fours and God knows what on private property, which is something that we shouldn't do. So, you know, I just hope that in the future, when something makes this agenda, that we as sure as we can be that it's something that deserves the attention of the Board of Commissioners. I mean, because I was as sure about that as I could be, especially with it being on the agenda. I mean, you know, we only discuss county business here, but, and there was a lot of talk that it was ours. And just think about it. And again, we'll never know. Had we voted to repair it and put new stuff there, that would have been funds allocated to private property, which would have been a terrible thing. But if we can stand here now and say that it's not ours, then we out of it. And the paper company owns it, I think, I was, what Commissioner Thrift was alluding to, is there any proof that they've been paying taxes on it, unless they're exempt? But if they own it, you know, you should be able to go to Vergis' office and see something that they own it. But the fact that we don't own it, that takes us out of it, as far as, as far as I see, Mr. Chairman.
Me too. Mr. Bryant, I had a brain, I had a brain...
Yes, sir. You doing good afternoon, Commissioner.
If you will, please, sir.
Yes, I am glad that you all mentioned that, because I actually, we actually did some research on this property, and we prepared some comments for you all. We had a couple of questions, you know.
And who is this guy?
Greg Bryant, he's a representative from the area.
Okay, okay.
Where the county wanted to demolish something, you know, not doing their due diligence as of, as a insurance problem, you know, that's our, that was our major concern right there. You know, we feel that some things were not fair, and we just wanted to take time to address, address you all with this, our concerns. And we're not, you know, because Mr. Lovett gave, provided me a text earlier this afternoon. And my thing is, we never wanted to disrespect the commission board. You know, we prepared these questions inside this packet right here, and hopefully, we can have someone give us some answers within the next week or so, because what Mr. Gillett just said, you know, we're thinking the same thing. We're thinking the exact same thing. And I think right now, there is no need for us to continue on until we really figure out who owns this property. But yes, still, we're going to still continue with our research and reach out to Warehouser about this property, and we're going to leave it as that for right now. So we really appreciate you all's time.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you for everything.
Thank you, sir.
I mean, we out of it, right? The commission, yeah.
We need to take some legal, not legal action. We need to...
Mr. Chair.
Vote to rescind or anything like that?
We need to rescind that motion that was on the, that was made the last time.
Yes.
And Mr. Davis, I talked with Ms. Glenda, and she said, "Vergis is going to take some paperwork coming from you."
To correct the records.
Saying that to clear off, like it says, Liberty County Recreation Park on the property card, is what it says. So, in order for them to clear that, it's going to take a letter coming from you to clear that off. So I don't know. And like I say, it actually on the handwritten card years ago, it had Community Recreation Park Briar Bay Community. And that's what I was saying, maybe return it back to like it was, and, you know, and then go from there and let the Briar Bay Community and Warehouser light it out, you know.
The board, the rest easy, though. You know, your actions like this are always subject to appropriate due diligence. Even if you voted to do something, we wouldn't, you wouldn't have continued if we had not been able to confirm ownership. It's standard practice. Even though you voted to do something, if it turns out you don't own property, for example, in this instance, you wouldn't have gone forward with your, with your action.
I don't know about that, Kelly. I thought we was going down there that Monday. You know, that was the impression I got, that we did it that Thursday, and Monday, they was going down there and start swiping.
No, wouldn't have been that way.
Just to shed a little light, so the Board of Tax Assessors maintains the deeds for all the records in the county, and been produced as a digest book, as you know. So our point of contact on any matter related to property ownership is always to go to that agency, because they have deeds. And so when it was questioned about who owned the property, we did that, as we always do. The ownership was shown as Liberty County Recreation Department, and that's how that came about. So it's normal practice, because they do have the deeds for us to, that is our source. We don't do title searches on everything, because they have supposedly the deeds to everything. So that's the only resource we have, yes.
Well, we towards, you know, we've researched the GIS system, potential implemented back in, what, 1997? Or when was it implemented? It's in our packet, you know, during our research. And this property is identified. You know, I've done a little query with Warehouser and all the property that they, that they have here in Liberty County, even more in Riceboro. And they don't have anything to identify or say that they own that piece of property. But we're just trying to figure out how this property just seemed like it just disappeared. Every record was disappeared from this property as of 2000, 2006, you know, so it's in our packet. It's in our package. You can research it, because like I said, we've done our research also, and we're gonna, we're gonna, like I said, we're gonna make contact with the paper company. But my associate, Mr. Charlie Jones, he's a historian. He was there when this property first, was first erected by Mr. Bryant, and he had a couple of words that he wanted to say.
Come on.
Good afternoon, Commissioner.
Hello, sir.
I just said, many, many years ago, back there in how I come about this land, know about this land, back there in 1973, when Mr. Earl Bags, Ms. Glenn Brown was the chairman, Mr. Earl Bags asked Ms. Mary Jane Stone, back that time, can we clear off that little piece of property on the corner there for a barbecue pit there? Because it was a little small barbecue pit there, and everybody know Mr. Bryant, he loved nice, clean stuff. So Mary Jane Stone gave him a mission to clean that property off. I helped clean that property off. He had a little 310, Hayes tractor. I helped clean it off, Mr. Alvin Frager, with the backhoe, we cleared our property off there. Mr. Glenn Bryant, himself, with his money, his employee, built that barbecue place there for the people in the community. Our place in the community was donated by Mary Jane Stone back there so many years ago, but in 1973, that's where Mr. Bryant got a hold of it to put a barbecue place there. And that never come about that place. That was the pride with the chairman, Kofa, Mr. Hazel Carter, all those was chairman of the commissioner, that never come up about Briar Bay Park until the other day here. When they come for the other day here, it just come from Wild Goose Chase, somebody want that property, a little piece of that property, I ain't calling no name, that's why everything come up about it. But it's that place that belongs to Mary Jane Stone from many years ago, and she didn't want to donate that piece of property to the people in the community, because Briar Bay was a place that everybody know Briar Bay. When you come to the four corners of Briar Bay there, got a little white church on one side, the Mary Jane Stone place was on the other side, across the road, across the road was a little barbecue place, across the side, on the other side there was Stafford Tyson piece of land. Union Camp, Plum Creek, never did own that land there. That land used to be George Pacific ran it in 1956, when C.B. Jones, he was the master of the whole county. What's he say? That's what goes. He's the one donated all the land he had, the Bronco Public Paper Company, 1956, donated for 100 years. After that right there, he donated a lot of people land that never get back.[1780.12] After that right there, he donated a lot of people land that never get back. That's how they come about the land down there in Riceburg. You can look in your tax digest, every piece of land, most of five, 10, 15 acres, law of the CB Jones and donated to, I mean, uh, mortgaged Bronky Public Paper, I mean, Georgia Pacific, first was Bronky Public Paper Company, then Georgia Pacific got it, now the Georgia Pacific Plum Creek got it, uh, just going all the way around the land. But that's the way it does that, Warehouser never been in there.
Yeah, well, Warehouser has it right now.
It might got it right now, but that's, that's where the land used to be, Mary Jane crossing on the corner there. I mean, they built that road back there many years ago, Stafford Tyson, the President B Deacon had to sign for that little piece across the road there where the church is at, Mary Jane Stone signed across the road there where she had her shop at. So none of the paper company never been involved with that land until now.
And say, we're not gonna take any more of your time, like I said, that everything within our packet. You know, you all addressed pretty much all the questions and concerns that we had earlier. You know, we asked about rescinding the order that you all made on July's 18th, um, meeting, um, June, June 18th meeting. So right now, you know, we don't have no concerns and we're gonna reach out to the paper company.
Thank you, sir.
When can we get something in reference to this property, you know, when can we?
Yeah, I was gonna mention, I'll be happy to share with Riceburg and anybody in the community, the results of the research.
Mm-hmm.
And so I'll probably first of next week, if you will leave your.
Could you give us a day or time to make sure, because we was waiting for the last three weeks, you know, from the past three weeks, the stories was continue changing, you know, who owns the property? So we, we, you know, we feel, we feel, we as a committee, we felt that we waited long enough, you know, we don't wanna be called, you know, one, but we're just asking people to, hey, can you perform your job?
Yes, well, to my knowledge, this is the first I've been asked publicly on the matter.
That's not fair. We've been working on this until today's meeting now.
And, and again, I should say, in, in the Board's defense, we have taken extraordinary action to contact heirs of various estates, to contact paper companies, to retain not only an heir, but an attorney of the paper company to, to consult his private records to try and, uh, you know, ha- have some conclusive determination as to who owns the property. That hasn't been the case unfortunately, as for the reasons I explained. But we've done everything and more that I think has been expected of the Board for a property that you don't even own. So, but I'll be happy to share those results. And I will forward them by email to, uh, the county, county administrator and to the Board members, and they can share them with, uh, C of Riceburg and others to include you.
Okay, will that be a PLC for the, for the paper company? Do you, uh, we wanna make sure that we rescind PLC for that paper company that you all speak with also?
I mean, Martin.
I, I have not spoken to the, the, the punitive owner, Warehouser. But I'll, I'll, I'll give, I'll share all of my research and the benefits of, uh, all documentation as well with anyone who asks.
All right.
But sometime early next week.
I will thank you, Commissioners, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need to rescind the motion?
You do, all right.
Yeah, I think, I think so, according to Robert's rule, I think we need to rescind that motion and take it off the book, let it be cleared.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we rescind the motion from the, our June, mid month meeting, uh, to clean the Briar Bay Park, um, site.
Second.
Motion in a second, that we rescind the motion that was made to do anything with the.
Yeah, we might need to amend that motion to, and the reason why we are rescinding it, because we have no ties with that.
Go, go ahead and make the motion.
No, no, cause you was the one that made it.
I made, I, I want you to put words in my mouth, cause I, I thought rescinding it was just what we were doing.
I think we need to, according to Robert's rules.
Well, go, go ahead, Robert.
All right. Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we rescind the motion from our mid month, uh, June, June meeting to, uh, tear down, clean up, sell or whatever, parlay with that piece of property in Briar Bay, because Liberty County Board of Commission, our Liberty County Board of Recreation has no ties to it.
The ownership, all right, okay. Is that, is that what they've seconded?
Second.
Second motion in a second.
Yeah.
It was a little lengthy, but I think Mr. Bryant has it recorded.
When it's all said and done, we, we, we won't own it, right?
That's right, that's right. Any further discussion?
Okay.
All in favor?
Mr. Kim.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Kim.
Yes, sir.
I, I understood the motion and we are definitely sure that that property does not belong to us, um, then I, then I concur, I'll, I'll vote with that. Uh, just wanna make sure that we know that it's not ours right now. If it turns out to be ours, then we'll, uh, study it when it comes back up, is that what you're saying?
Yes, all I can tell you is, talk about real estate records, which is the definitive resource, uh, indicates that the county has no interest in the property and never has.
That's right.
Now, there, there may be some, uh, you know, magical deed or proclamation in the City of Riceburg records or somewhere in the, the bowels of the county's archives, but to, to date, no one has discovered that. Oh, yeah. I, I can state, uh, Commissioner Walden, that to my knowledge, the, the county has no formal interest in the property.
Well, I, I appreciate that, um, because I just wanted to, on, on the recreation side, to make sure of that. And I also think that at this particular time, with what I have saw in the Homestown Park, which shows that is the Homestown community, that we do, do diligence here and looking at all of our parks and make sure we got clear deeds and titles to them, because I could see, just like my good friend, Mr. Gillard said, uh, we could be hammering nails on something that don't belong to us. So we need to make sure this is an eye opener for all of us, especially me. So I think we need to be making sure that our corners are marked, even with these, uh, new fire stations, let's make sure what we're doing is, is down the road and right way to do it, okay?
Cross the board, yes, sir.
I agree.
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
And I'm voting in favor of it, if you wanna see my hand up, it's, uh.
So you did, you did with, with the others of us, vote was unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Davis, for that issue. You all are welcome to stay if you like, or if not, you can be excused.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'll forward his packet to the Board of Assessors, who runs that property tax division and does those title checks, so.
Okay. All right, so, masking ordinance.
Yes, sir, as many of you know, beginning with the City of Savannah, several jurisdictions throughout the state, uh, adopted, uh, emergency mask orders or ordinances, mandating the wearing of face coverings, uh, in all public spaces in their jurisdictions, to include, uh, importantly, private businesses, um, and, uh, and other establishments. At the time, there was some ambiguity fought in the Governor's executive order that perhaps might have allowed local jurisdictions to do that. Because as you, as you remember, I think from past discussions, local jurisdictions are prohibited from implementing any emergency measures that are inconsistent with the Governor's executive orders. And that's defined as anything which is more or less restrictive than what's contained in his executive order. Uh, so while I think most city and county attorneys interpreted the order as precluding a jurisdiction's ability to pass the types of ordinances that Savannah and others did, uh, many jurisdictions were willing to nonetheless pass those sorts of ordinances because they felt it was such public importance, uh, they'd do whatever they could in order to ensure the public health. Uh, as of last evening, the Governor issued, uh, his latest executive order extending the statewide emergency, um, conditions. Uh, and in that order, he made clear that local jurisdictions who mandate the wearing of mask in these areas of public accommodation are, in his, in his view, um, inconsistent with his executive order. And he ordered those, uh, ordinances and orders to be suspended. So essentially, uh, as of yesterday, it was official that those ordinances and orders are no longer enforceable, at least according to the Governor. Um, and so I know you folks that asked that I prepared an ordinance that did something similar to what Heinzville and some of our other sister cities and counties have done. Uh, but in light of the Governor's or, uh, order, I did that before you, as one such order is consistent with the City of Heinzville's, that mandates, uh, face coverings throughout the county in the unincorporated areas and all public spaces. But the other is an ordinance which mandates the wearing of mask is, mask only in county buildings. Um, and I think that even, uh, notwithstanding the Governor's executive order, that the county does have the authority to control its own buildings. Um, and it is consistent in nearly every way, in my opinion, with the, with the Governor's orders. Uh, governmental functions and facilities are deemed under his order to be critical, critical infrastructure, and critical, critical infrastructure is required to implement whatever measures that it can to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. And as part of that order, face masks are encouraged. So it's entirely consistent, in my opinion, with the Governor's orders, that this Board mandate the wearing of mask for all visitors in county buildings. And so that's what the second order proposes. Uh, and I'll be happy to discuss one or both with you if you, if you like. Importantly, under both, I think we're all concerned about enforceability and not taking punitive action against people who might wear face coverings. And so under either ordinance, um, penalties are, are fairly mild. Uh, first of all, it makes note that, uh, we're, uh, encourage education and voluntary compliance, but only after repeated warnings and figured to comply, would people be subject to penalty. Uh, no imprisonment is available for these violations, only modest penalties. The first violation, I believe, is $25, the second is 75, and the third and subsequent violations are no, no more than $100.
Oh, so, so we left a zero off.
What's that?
I said, we, I said we left a zero off.
We could.
Right. I was talking about, you know, the City of Heinzville, a thousand.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yes.
There we go.
And I, I don't, I don't be critical of any of the jurisdictions, but I think a lot of people have bull or plate enforcement language, and typically for infractions of local ordinances, that is the, the maximum, uh, penalty, a thousand dollars or, you know, punishment and imprisonment, not to exceed, uh, 60 days oftentimes.
Labor camps and.
So, so under either ordinance, our approach is one of education and cooperation, and then only in instances of repeated violation, just flagrant disregard for the, the order, would people be cited and fined civilly. Uh, and again, the, the penalties are rather modest. But, um, I mean, you've asked me, you know, oftentimes you don't like the advice, but I have to give you my honest opinion. But I think you know, even before the Governor's executive order of yesterday, but particularly in light of the executive, of executive order, I don't think that, uh, an emergency order which mandates the wearing of mask in all public spaces in the county would be enforceable. Um, and you know, what that means, we could discuss later, but, but the alternative to requiring face mask in all county buildings, I think is enforceable. And I've discussed this with, uh, most all the constitutional officers who operate from our county buildings, as well as the Chief Judge and other judges, and they're in full support with, whatever the county decides, it will of course cooperate.
Thank you, sir. You know, we talked about this at the last meeting, yes? Everybody counter turned to bring us something, of course, and then things have been changing ever since.
Yes.
It seems like, on a daily basis.
Um, I, I do wanna mention, um, without attribute any particular case, that there are, um, right now, about nine ongoing cases involving contact with county employees who either have already been confirmed or are symptomatic and waiting for confirmation. Um, so I think, you know, talking to some of the other folks in this building and also in the Justice Center, uh, they're very concerned about that. Um, so, um, I, I know that we've got an internal policy that the Commissioner, that the employees have to mask. I would ask the Commission to consider us asking people with enforcement, but asking people to mask when they come in, at least for right now, uh, since things are, I hate to use the term hot, uh, but they are. Uh, and you could actually see within the coming week, when those tests come back, a couple of departments that do have to shut down temporarily, uh, potentially for cleaning and/or, uh, testing of the rest of the personnel. Um, hopefully that's not the case, but that is kinda where we are right now, uh, internally with stuff. Um, we would supply, uh, masks to the public as they come in and, uh, the folks at the door, uh, we've already talked about that, if it should go into effect, and they, they would be asking a simple question of, you know, do you have a mask? It is mandatory. No, I don't. Can you, you know, here is one if you want one. Um, I can't wear it cause I have a medical condition? Okay. I mean, they're not gonna be challenged about the medical conditions or asked to show any kind of card or anything like that. That's just, you know, and I think what we'll find out is that 99% will, um, wear a mask. They have been asking when they come in, do you have mask? And, uh, we've been providing them.
And I think the Board is familiar with the latest data from the CDC and the Coastal Health District, but if not, the, the data is very concerning. Uh, for example, just in the last two weeks, we've had more, uh, reported positive cases in Liberty County than we have in the last four months. Uh, and that's not simply from an increase in, in testing. Uh, there is, uh, the incidence of transmission is increasing fairly rapidly in, in Liberty County, as well as throughout coastal Georgia and the state of Georgia. And so, you know, you can debate the, the merits of the policy. I think probably most or many in this room would support, uh, a, a face mask mandate. But, um, again, working within the, the constraints of the Governor's executive order, requiring them in county buildings is probably, uh, the, the most that you can do. Uh, that order also provides for the temporary restricted access to county buildings. As Joey mentioned, there have been, uh, reported, uh, confirmed cases of COVID-19 in both the courthouse and the annex, uh, and there could be additional cases reported. Uh, and so that's, uh, we felt the need perhaps to restrict access, uh, access to those buildings again, much like we did at the beginning, not interrupt essential services, those would still be provided through curbside service or remote service or by appointment service. Uh, I think that was very successful the last time. I don't know of anyone who really had much complaints, uh, many complaints. Um, and so, but again, that order leaves with the Chairman and the County Administrator the discretion to restrict access and to what extent you'd like to restrict access. So if you, if you're so inclined, you could, as part of one or both, one, one of those ordinances, you could authorize those restricted access measures as well. If not tomorrow, then at such time as you think appropriate, depending the results of pending, pending test.
Yeah, I think in reality, what, what I would ask the Board to consider would be to, um, ask folks to mask when they come in the building, uh, by ordinance, and then let's see what happens, uh, with those other areas in the next four or five days, um, to be able to come back if we have to back up, at least for a short period of time, until we cool down a little bit.
And of course, the ordinance does make plenty of exceptions for, for causes that I think most people would expect, you know, if you can't wear a mask due to some underlying medical condition or health condition, or because of age, or, uh, you know, if you're in a court and you're hearing impaired and need to look at someone's, uh, mouth in order to understand what they're, what they're saying, uh, if you're a child below a certain age, there's several exceptions, common sense exceptions for wearing masks in public buildings. They're consistent throughout most jurisdictions that are contained in that order as well.
All right, I wanna hear from the Commissioners. We have two proposals for us, one that mimics Heinzville and one that's, uh, county buildings.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I'd like to, um, just say that, you know, I, I think we discussed it at, at length of, at our last meeting. Um, and you know, I, um, I, I let everyone know that, you know, that I'm, I'm in favor of wearing masks. I've, um, you know, I'm looking at the two ordinance, um, and I do know what the Governor said yesterday, um, and, you know, and, and that's fine, but, um, I do know that the, the numbers are getting worse throughout this nation. Some states, uh, I guess the Governors of those states are making it mandatory, uh, right next door, Alabama, I mean, they, they did it just, this past week. And, you know, and, and whether they do or whether they don't, um, personally, I live in Heinzville and whatever the ordinance was in Heinzville, I'm, I'm gonna govern myself by that. On my job, we have to wear them. And, um, and even when I'm not at work or not in Heinzville, I'm gonna wear it. I mean, that's, that's just me and, and my family and, and the people that I care about, and I encourage everyone to do that. Um, and I know we're not to the point where, to make a motion, but I'm in favor of the ordinance for the masks be worn in the unincorporated areas of Liberty County. I think, um, with what Heinzville has done, being the largest city, uh, I think Waltherville passed it this past week and the other, uh, right now, they're the second largest city, uh, Flemington is running a close second, Flemington has passed it, and I think the City of Midway did, you know, so that's, that's almost all of Liberty County. Um, and I, I do know that, you know, anyone that does any kind of commerce in Liberty County, they have to come to Heinzville, so to not have it in the unincorporated area of my district like Homestown, and they could come, you know, when they get round McLary's Curve, they, they in Flemington. And when they get up by Dairy Queen, they in Heinzville. So, um, you know, they're gonna be governed by it one way or another. So it's, it's just my thought that, I think that, um, because of the, the state of the world and the numbers rising every day, I think that, um, as elected leaders of this county, that we need to take, um, what I would consider appropriate action.
Thank you, sir.
That's my thought.
Mr. Fraser?
I appreciate you, Mr. Chair. And, uh, Commissioner Gillard, I, I do, uh, agree with you about, uh, the importance of, of being safe during, during this time and also.
during, during this time and also wearing face coverings. I'm just like you at my job now, you know, we've implemented where if we're close to six feet, make sure that we wear a mask. My family, we all wear masks. I just have a, a few concerns. One of them is actually what the governor said yesterday. Regardless of how we feel about, about his decision personally, the decision was made, just like with us. If, if we decide to, to put an ordinance in place, just because a citizen doesn't like what we put in place, can they just not address it or, or not abide by what we put in place? So, that's, that's a concern, and I guess I, I'll let our attorney address that, but I don't see the reason to implement something that we can't enforce. If, if we can't enforce it, is, we can encourage. I, I don't mind us doing a resolution, encouraging, you know, you know, being safe during this time, you know, we, I, I think I put in an email, I think we could get with the chamber, we could get elected officials, you know, clergy to, you know, do some videos and to send those out through via social media, or even, you know, do an article in the newspaper or whatnot, and just try to encourage. Now, when we're talking about the buildings that we have control over, 100%, I agree. As a, as a business owner, I, I strongly encourage that everyone that comes in, in my shop, wear a mask, even, even the ones who work there. But even looking at, and Kelly, I think you gave me sort of the same thing, but it's fine. I'm, I'm pretty...
It almost looks like.
I'm, I'm pretty sure, and even with the city's ordinance, to me, it, it's not fair as a business owner that if someone is outside of my, my location, that I can get fined as a business owner as well. I, I, I don't agree with that because, but it goes back to what the governor says. Why implement something and vote on it? And I mean, I understand they did it a couple of days ago, but they probably going to have to recant what they did, because legally, you can't do anything. So, they could, they could say all they want, but at the end of the day, I, I think we should look at alternative measures of, you know, we could, we could get the youth commission involved, you know, for, that'd be a project for them to be able to, you know, encourage safety during this time. And then if that doesn't work, then we could go here. But let's not, let's, don't go from one to five, when we have two, three, and four options available as well. I mean, that's, that's just my opinion.
Commissioner Walden, let me get in there.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I appreciate you folks understanding my absence tonight. I hope you do, and I'll get back with you later, but I sent an email out today to you and some of the other commissioners. Hopefully, everybody read it. I wear a mask, my wife wears a mask, of course, when you go in the stores around Heinzville, you have to wear a mask. We started off this pandemic, and everybody was talking about hand sanitizer, and that's what we did. And now we forgot, we don't even mention hand sanitizer that much. We're talking about a mask. I think a mask is going to be hard in unincorporated areas. I understand what Commissioner Gillis said in the Homestown area or whatever, but, you know, you've got county employees that may be out there working that's wearing a mask, and across the ditch is a man cutting your grass without a mask on. If it's an ordinance and can't be enforced, I might, Commissioner Fraser, it's not very much more than what the paper wrote on. So, I, I know this is the most compassionate board that I've ever worked with, that we've all tried to do, and I think we all do what we feel like is the best. I haven't had a call at all from anyone saying, "Pass it." Nor have I had a call from anyone saying, "Don't pass it." It's just my honest feeling that it is something that could create chaos between a group of people that's not going to wear one, that eventually is not going to, to get another group to challenge him. And I've seen it happen, and we've read it in the newspapers, individuals stabbing one another and shooting. So, I don't want that in Liberty County. I think that when I stated that PPE is exactly that, it's your personal protective equipment. As far as Mr. Brown's talking about, your employees are under your guidance, and whatever their PPE is, you make them put it on and wear it. If it comes off, it needs to be something that you address in every department, road department, in that county administration building out there and right on. But as far as the ordinance, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm a countywide ordinance, I'm afraid that it, it can't be enforced, and I, I just really and pretty don't think it's the time right now. Let's continue to encourage our citizens to social distance and wear their mask when there's no way to social distance.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Thewes.
Yes, sir. Ms. Chairman, I also concur as a small business owner in, in the city of, of Heinzville, and I wear my mask when I think I need to, or if a, a store requested I wear my mask inside the store. But as far as putting it out there to mandate to our citizens of the unincorporated area, I'm not in favor of that. I think as adults, we should have the right and the choice to where we want to wear a mask or not, and not the government put it on our backs at this time. I know the numbers are increasing, but I also know that it, we can enforce it, and there's no, there's no sense in putting it out there if we cannot enforce it at this time. Maybe the governor may change something later on down the road, I don't know. But I think from what I've seen in the city of Heinzville, Heinzville, excuse me, most folks are wearing a mask, and it, I think that that may be something we come accustomed to. But I don't think that we should pass it for the unincorporated area. Also, like Mr. Brown, you know your employees more than we do, and you know the closeness, proximity that they have in these buildings, and if you, I'm in favor of the, you know, folks coming into the building to wear a mask. So, with that being said, I'm in favor of the ones coming into the, to the county buildings to mask up, but not for the countywide mandate.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Senator Stevens.
All right. I would just say that the numbers are climbing, and it's climbing fast. I know what the governor says, but then we need to look at Liberty County. If we can't pass something that's enforceable, then we need to do some kind of level of educating, just like I passed every commissioner out here tonight. Two masks, it's only two masks, but when you see somebody that you love and care about, give these masks to them. Now, if they take it and throw it on the ground, that's one thing, but if they take it and wear it, and you walk away, to me, I would feel great, I feel like I did something for somebody instead of trying to, and make them wear something, instead of asking them to wear it. And I think if we can do, like, I think, what was it, Commissioner Fraser said, do some videos or something out and get those out. Go to the newspaper. I think educating is going to be our best, key assist to this issue right now in Liberty County. And like everybody said, like Commissioner Walden said, we're talking about masking, but we're not talking about washing our hands. Okay? So, and now, the only other thing I would see is try to communicate with the, in the unincorporate areas, try to communicate with the business owners, to make sure that if someone walks in their store, "Hey, do you have a mask?" Now, I'm not going to tell that business owner, tell that person, "Go out," but just ask them a question. Do you have one? Would you wear it? I mean, because trying to enforce something that we don't have a bite in is dangerous. And I mean, it's a shame that it's that way, that we got a governor that thinks the way how he thinks. But I think we can do a better job in another way than what the governor is thinking. Notice the governor got on his mask.
Yeah.
So, that's all I got to say.
All right. So, I have two, is it what, proposals or orders, Mr. Attorney?
Chairman, I, I would, and I know and love all my commissioners, and, you know, we've worked together, and we, you could check the records. I've been here, this is my 12th year, and we got a real cohesive unit, and we, you could check the records, you know, and there's not many issues where, when the vote comes, where it's not, you know, where, where there's some contention. It's, it's very rare.
Very rare.
Which is a good thing, you know, for as long as we've been here, and everybody is different, and we represent different segments of, of population of this county. But I, regardless of how the vote pans out, I would like to make a motion that we adopt the emergency order requiring that mask coverings be worn in public in an unincorporated areas of Liberty County during the COVID-19 public health emergency.
Good. I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed.
Mr. Chairman, I'm opposed.
All right, sir. The motion fails. All right.
Mr. Chair, I would, I, Commissioner Gillis, he's absolutely right, you know, I think this is the first time, and I should have said by you today.
Wait, do you, do you have a mask? Okay.
Yeah, I, I have a mask, but, I mean, he, he's totally right. I don't, before I make this motion, I just want to say to the public that I, I could speak for myself and everyone else. I'm not against the mask, you know, everyone should wear a mask, everyone should wash their hands, everyone should use hand sanitizer and everything else. But from, from my standpoint, you know, from, from my experiences, I'm, I just, I have a lot of concerns, you know, from, you know, from being a business owner to being, let's be frank, a young black male. Masks are cool in the summertime, but what about when I'm not in my suit, and I'm wearing some sweatpants and a hoodie, and I have on a mask? I, I, I don't want to, I don't even want to even, even go down that, on, down that road. So, that's another reason why I'm, I have concerns, and that's why I feel that before we jump all the way to that, let's see what else we can do, you know, to see if we could get the community behind us to supportive and, and look at that it's benefiting everyone to wear a mask, you know? But I just, I, I'm afraid to, to make an ordinance today that we might regret tomorrow.
Yeah. And, and I understand that, Commissioner Fraser, but, you know, education is the key. It's always been, and it always will be. But I got the, the four channel, the three channels in Savannah that's saying the same thing every day.
Yeah.
And then I'll go to the cable. Every now and then, I'll do the Fox channel and CNN and MSNBC. And the numbers are rising, and all we have, all we have are social distancing, sanitizing your hands in your work area and wearing masks. That's all we have.
And gloves.
Well, I mean, well, that's, that's the same with the hands.
Right.
But, but the, and, and lately, you know, since we talked about it last weekend, you know, just nine days ago, I guess it was, it seems like something has happened in the last nine days, in the last week, week and a half. But all I hear on the news is wearing your mask. That, you know, sanitizing and distancing is still part of the, the precautions that we need to take, but wearing masks is the one that everybody talks about the most. And, and there's a reason for that. I mean, there, there's a reason for that. And, but, you know, we, we don't have the support to, to pass this, and, and, and we can move on. But, but me, I know what I'm going to do, and I know what Felicia's going to do, and I know what my grandkids are going to do, and I know what I'm going to do between 6:00 and 3:30 on my job. And I know what I'm going to do in the unincorporated areas of the county when I ride through Homestown tomorrow to check on my road. I'm going to have on a mask. Maybe the people will, maybe the people won't. But I go to Savannah this weekend, well, whatever I do, I'm going to have on a mask until something better comes along. But that's me.
Right.
Okay.
And that's the thing, I, I totally agree. I, I guess the only difference I feel that we have with this is what do we control? Just, just like you were saying, I know my family is going to wear a mask. I know the people who come into, to my businesses, they're going to wear a mask. I could control that, but I, I think it's, it's a very slippery slope of where, you know, where government sticks his hand. And, and I'm, I'm just afraid to even open up that Pandora's box with that, on top of what the, the governor's order. And again, you know, some people like it, some people don't. We don't have to, but it's just a chain of command, and, and it's something, if we can't enforce it, why do it? And, and then, like even with the city of Heinzville, I think what, who's, who was enforcing that? The police? So, then they're making the police mask cops, when they could be focusing on, on other issues that, to me, are more important, like, so, with that being said, I, I want to make the motion.
Commissioner Fraser, before you do that, let me, let me do this. I mean, you may, you may be kind enough, sorry, to include this in your motion. Mr. Davis, we, we spoke at our last meeting of, that, well, there was a consensus that this group would favor the word encourage. I don't see that in, in this order.
No, regarding county buildings.
We commandate that.
The, the ordinance mandates it. You can take the approach much like private industry, much like Walmart, which buildings you control, you can mandate that people require them, and if not, you can...
But I thought, what I gather, maybe I'm wrong, because this is, we, we would encourage it countywide. Did not get the feel...
That was Commissioner Walden, but it doesn't say that in the ordinance. It's just mandated.
No, the, the order before you, before you sign it, we revise slightly to remove the provision requiring the temporary closure of county offices, and also will, excuse me, include a provision directing the county administrator to undertake a public information campaign and to encourage all residents of the county to wear a mask at all appropriate times.
What about the ones...
That's indicated here or that's written in here?
It's not. That's what will be included. The, the order technically, which is within your authority to sign, you consult with the board. So, tonight, probably only a motion is needed to require them, that all people, all visitors to county offices, wear masks.
All right. Are we clear?
Okay. Now, we're talking about the county.
Yeah, I think the, I think the question was, though, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think...
Rather than mandate, we encourage.
Rather than mandate, on a countywide basis, we possibly do a resolution to ask.
Right.
But that's not, but still...
I think I'm just trying to...
You're right. I was going to say...
I think what, what you have before you, my understanding was that everyone was in agreement that you require that visitors wear a face mask to county buildings.
Right.
Right. To county buildings you control. This building, for example, you know, the rec department, the courthouse, with the cooperation of county constitutional officers, because we can't simply close that without their cooperation, and it won't be closed. We're requiring a face mask. But, you know, the court will defer to them as to who wears masks in court proceedings and to what extent. We'll work with all the constitutional officers, the courts. But yes, so that the, the order that you will sign will mandate that all visitors wear face masks to county buildings, subject to appropriate exceptions for health and age of the, the wearer and other, other exceptions. As well as we will direct and authorize a public information campaign and also encourage all residents wherever they might be to wear masks in areas of public accommodation.
So, I want that before he made his...
Oh, no, I'm, I'm with you. I was, I didn't know if we needed to separate that. That's what I was going to ask that question, too, you know, do, do one strictly for the buildings that we have control, because that'd be mandated, and then we do a separate one to encourage...
Encourage.
...everything else. You see? Everything else. You see?
But we don't have that in front of us.
We do want to encourage and educate in the unincorporated area.
Right. But if I, if I could make it simpler, the chairman is really, the chairman has the authority to issue the orders. He consults with you folks. And so the final order that I present to him will include both components.
Okay.
It will.
Together, together.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
And it'll be very clear, won't be confusing.
Paper.
Yes.
I'm with you.
And really, overall, I think most people are masking. You know, that I see in the community, most of them are.
Right.
In and out of a building, most of them are. It's just becoming a way of what we do here.
And, and I found for the public's benefit, it's, I think it's much more, uh, um, uh, successful if you have fewer orders. Uh, not in simply a collection of orders, the public has to consult this one and that one.
Mandate.
Rather than piecemeal it, I think just one order addressing both concerns is probably the most effective.
All right. Commissioner Frazier, if you.
We could, um, and the order's gonna be for the county buildings. And it's gonna include a component for encouragement.
Outside the county buildings.
That can, in the encouragement in the unincorporated areas of the county.
That's right. Yes, sir. And, and.
Educate.
And authorizing the county administrator to, to initiate a public information campaign so that everyone is encouraged to wear a mask wherever you are.
Just gonna throw this out there and then we'll move on. Do you encourage them by giving them candy? Or what, what, what are we talking about?
Well, I think just your, your, what you do today.
Give them a mask.
I was joking.
Well, but truthfully, I, I did explore ways.
Anything to do with masks, I'm voting for.
There you go.
And just so the board knows, truthfully, as, as discussed with the chairman, uh, earlier today, I did explore ways that we could somehow incentivize residents or businesses.
Candy.
Rather than just candy.
Candy.
I didn't consider that one. But there, there's really no effective way to incentivize the wearing of masks, but other than by your example and by your proclamations. And I think, uh, you know, today's action mandating West, uh, uh, face mask wearing is, is appropriate and will set an example for businesses and others to follow.
All right.
And, and just one more question. Uh, I don't know if this before, I guess it'd be to Mr. Brown. Uh, like even the businesses, can we send out a letter to them and, and if they need some help with providing masks? I mean, will, do we have a stock where we could send some?
No, sir, not really. But, you know, it's interesting you talk about the letter. Uh, I think what we would do is, because we're having a little trouble getting those now on the stockpiles too. They're coming hard again. But, um, making some notes, getting with you guys on your thoughts, uh, doing the public education campaign, possibly using the youth and doing a specific letter to those businesses that sends this order as well as give them resources for those products. I think, and I don't think we let up. I think, I think it's just something continuous that if we're gonna encourage it, we could continue to encourage it. And we'll continue to post things and put information out there about the benefits and about CDC guidelines.
Right. And, and then, uh, can we get with the chamber and the minority chamber?
Absolutely, sir.
Send some information out to them? So we could all connect.
You, you bring up a good point though.
They haven't seen it on TV. They ain't been in the world in a while.
Or you don't have any businesses in the.
You bring up a good point. The governor's executive order does require the posting of certain notices at businesses throughout locations. And my knowledge is not a really good clearinghouse for small businesses to take advantage of to get examples of those notices. So, it's part of the public initiative, we could generate model notices for small businesses and give them kind of a summary of what's required of them, where should they should post it, what they should post, what they should do.
Some of them would appreciate that, I know.
Yes.
Right. Yeah.
All right, now let me. I'm, I'm.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Commissioner Walden.
I, yeah, I just, I'm, um, I've been listening to a lot of real good conversation and I wanted to, I wanted to just piggyback on something Commissioner Gill said. Um, and I said earlier about the unincorporated areas. Um, I, I think that this message should be all of Liberty County. But there's so many people that don't understand what the unincorporated areas are. I mean, we do, we're in government, but there are a lot of people that don't understand that unincorporated. And I think that the message needs to go that we still encourage all citizens in Liberty County. And cover that with one swipe of paint. Uh, these other cities have adopted things except for Riceboro and I understand that and our, all of our utility companies and all of our, I'm sure our industrial customers have, but let's just make sure that it is countywide. Um, we're not gonna go against what the governor says. I mean, he's already said what he's gonna do, that's fine. But Joey, when we get through with this meeting, it would probably be good for you to to send him a note or send it to Jimmy and say, hey, look, guys, we followed the governor's guidelines and we're encouraging, but we also would like to get a little money down there for masks. So, uh, do whatever we can. But I think that the message needs to be countywide. Just, that's my thoughts on it.
Yeah.
I tried to enforce an unincorporated areas, but we still need to send a message countywide.
That's true.
So.
Your own key.
And, and just to be clear, the mandate regarding face masks in county buildings applies to wherever the buildings might be located in the city.
That's what I'm saying.
Whether it's in the city.
All of our buildings, correct.
So wherever they're located, and whether in the unincorporated or incorporated areas, everyone has to wear a mask in county buildings. Whether they're owned or controlled by the county.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm gonna say something and it might sound a little out of whack, but I thought about either mask it or casket it.
Tell you what, sometimes it takes a wake-up call.
Yeah, I mean, like, again, I, I think we, everyone, the entire commission feels the same way about the mask.
We do.
I guess, I guess we, we just question which direction we need to go.
Ready for your motion, sir.
Uh, Mr. Chair, be honest with you, um, after this last conversation, I'm almost confused.
Help him out, Mr. Attorney.
If I can.
You have to do it by Robert's rules.
Come on, Robert, help me.
I can get my. Board, uh, a motion simply to, uh, support the chairman's decision to require face mask in all buildings and properties owned by the county, subject to appropriate exceptions, and to authorize a public information campaign to encourage all residents of the county that might be located to wear face mask in public.
Second.
That's my motion, Mr. Chair.
You did very well, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
What is your second? Any further discussion? All in favor? All in favor? All right. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Kelly, for your research. Ms. Leah? Come on down.
If you wanted me to touch it. Now I'm not wearing a mask because I have a health condition. Um, good afternoon or evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This is our bi-annual update. So in January of this year, um, we were pushing hard for T-Splas to make sure that that was going to pass, helping plan all the town hall meetings. Um, we got a new employee, the young lady on the far right, her name is Shima. We were kinda doing business as usual. Oh, thank you, sir. I couldn't see it either. Um, business as usual, star student luncheon, ribbon cuttings, our annual banquet where we give out our business awards, all those typical things that we do in February of this year. Again, same typical activities. Um, T-Splas again, business after hours, our y'all kids. The young adult liberty leaders went to Liberty Regional, um, and talking about masks too. Commissioner Frazier, we just ordered 200 branded masks that we're gonna give out to the community. Um, so that's something we can order more of if we need to.
Oh, please do.
They're branded with our.
Let me do this while I'm thinking about it, if you don't mind. Mr. Mosley, I saw the news there was someone, I heard they were donating thousands of masks to the city of Statesboro. Can we follow up on that and find out where that source is? Yeah.
Um, again, ribbon cuttings, um, Rainy Max of Kindness Week is something we did last year. We did it this year. It's just a, a nice thing to do in the community. In March is when everything went chaotic. It was on the county retreat, actually, that, that week, um, we were all there. Um, so Valerie, the young lady on the far right, she had been with me for two and a half, three years. Um, she did come back. She had taken some leave as, when she had a baby, uh, which I was very excited. And then we had ribbon cuttings and some of our normal stuff in the first part of the month and then um, the world went crazy and COVID-19 happened. Um, so we started a, a lot of options on our social media since we couldn't really go anywhere or do anything to make sure the public was aware of carryout, drive-through options, curbside options, all those things where they could still shop locally um, and still get what they wanted. Um, we also helped support the Liberty County Sheriff's Department in that timeframe too with the little girl that they found in Riceboro on Barrington Ferry. They planned the birthday party and all that. Um, in April of this year, we started a farmer's market subscription box service, um, because the farmer's market had to close. Um, we, um, averaged about 200 cars a week that came and got a box of fresh produce. Um, a lot of it was elderly folks that could not get out to go to the grocery store, but they could sit in their car, pop their trunk and let us put them in there, um, which was very good. We made sure our businesses knew about emergency loans and grants. We did a lot of options for children, um, and people who were homebound, the little boy in the top middle. We did an indoor selfie scavenger hunt. So every week, um, children were challenged to take 12 selfies. Um, various, in various ways, scavenger hunt, I think this was take a picture, it was something blue, and he took a picture of the blue front door and posted in the event. They did very well. Kids were very engaged, parents were very engaged. Just something to help entertain people. Um, we did a lot with Liberty Regional in the last several months. We've taken 1,000 masks over there that people in this community have sown. The hospital didn't want to have a lot of folks going there. So they dropped them off at our office and then we transported them to Liberty Regional. We also organized parking for our providers, which is an opportunity to thank those folks parked in the parking lot, had lights on, a music and all kinds of stuff. Um, so that was really nice. In May of this year, we continued with that farmer's market subscription box service and that's Congressman Carter there. He came and volunteered one of the Thursdays or Fridays, I don't remember what day, and helped put food in all the cars. We did our backyard barbecue, but we did not do that as a, um, an event where people could come and sit down. We did it as a drive-through service, again, kinda like that farmer's market, so we just gave people their lunch, which was already pre-plated. Um, we created a whole series of Google and Zoom backdrops. Uh, our local educators were using Google Classrooms, Google Meets and Zoom, um, during the course of this whole time. So we provided them with some custom backgrounds of Liberty County historic sites and, um, cultural sites so they could use those backgrounds with their students.
Pardon me?
Oh, yeah. No, no, I did the same thing a minute ago.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Um, we created a choose kindness sign. We saw that a lot of folks were maybe not necessarily being as nice to folk people as they could be. Um, servers especially seemed to be getting very discouraged in our community because they weren't getting tips anymore, because you don't have people coming in restaurants. Um, but those servers were providing a lot of other services, like they were the delivery drivers for the restaurant. Um, so these choose kindness signs were to try to promote that, to just, just be nice. Um, we printed 500 of those and they are, they're everywhere, um, which is very nice. Um, we did show us your yard, again, another campaign to get people to show us something. We know you're stuck at home, show us your front or your backyard, what you're proud of, and that was very popular. Um, there's the chairman's guide to social distancing. Um, he had sent me one we had already done, um, but we tried to encourage that social distance and that's what six feet of social distance is in coastal Georgia. We did our state of the county address, that was done virtually. Um, it was very well attended. We have eaten a lot of food, we've cooked a lot of food, tried to keep people entertained. We made peach jelly, we made all kinds of stuff. Anything we could do to try to keep people involved and engaged. That infographic on the right, I know it's kinda hard for you to see, but I, I provided you with a copy too. That's just a small snippet of all of the things we've done in the last several months during COVID-19. Um, most chambers in this area, um, either closed completely. Some haven't reopened, most, a lot of them fired their staff or laid them off or furloughed them. We've been able to retain all of our staff. Um, we had to do a lot of things. We cleaned baseboards, we cleaned window sills, we, we did stuff we never knew we were gonna do. Um, but we kept everybody employed. So we were very happy about that. We've also contacted 100% of our membership at least twice in the last three months, um, most of them a lot more than twice. And then in July, and we just had, actually, our first in-person PTP luncheon was today. Um, we did have masks available. We also started, um, comfort bands, so you can wear a little band that tells, it's a different color, tell people what your comfort level is, if you're comfortable with, um, fist bumps and elbow bumps, or if you'd rather they just stay away. Um, felt like it went very well. We did half-capacity plated food, all of that. Um, and then we have an eggs and issues breakfast at the end of this month with Representative Williams with the legislative update. Um, these are just some more pictures. Um, this was the little boy who did all his selfies and his mom sent them in. So the kids really did enjoy doing their selfies. It was something to keep everybody engaged. That's all the boxes at the Baker Fraser House. Um, we have never, never, ever want to do that again. We're so tired of hauling produce. Um, we also started First Responder Fridays during this period and we fed a different segment of first responders every week from one end of this county to the other.
That's good.
Um, we had a spirit week, uh, again, try to keep people's spirits up. Um, Coal Banker Southern Coast won Spirit Week. They did the best job, um, and were voted upon to have one. And we started and adopted senior. I think we had 12 seniors who signed up, uh, would have liked more, which is fine. We had quite a few high school seniors who tried to sign up, um, which was a little odd. Um, but senior citizens is what it was meant for. And we would call those folks once a week just to say hi. We noticed a lot of seniors in our community being homebound, not being able to go to church. Those things are getting a, a little blue. Um, so we started calling those folks. Um, and then we helped advertise, of course, and market a lot of things like free testing with diversity and the hospital and all the other groups that did it. We, during this time, we've had a lot of time to do design work. So we designed a new rack card for Gichikunda, which is that one on the left there, and the Liberty CVB has paid for that rack card and it's in all the welcome centers in the state of Georgia and Gichikunda also has some for their own use. And they did still have the gathering and we designed their flyer. Um, right when COVID-19 started, um, we had just purchased this wall wrap on the right-hand side in the Savannah Airport and then all flights stopped. That kinda bit us in the, um, behind. But thankfully, the Savannah Airport has given us a whole quarter for free. Um, so instead of six months' worth of advertising, we got nine months' worth of advertising. So our contract has been extended, which is very nice. And on the left-hand side, um, that top billboard was running in Charleston, right when COVID-19 started. Um, the bottom one will run in October. And then, um, finally, just for the chamber side of it, we said when we came before you, um, back in January, that we, we are on a mission to, from going from a six-seat chamber to a seven-seat. That seventh word being a contributor. And I really do feel in the last several months, I don't know what else we could have contributed, um, but we contributed a lot. Any questions?
I do. Can, can you, um, give us any kind of indication of, of the businesses, how they're doing with the whole COVID thing? I, I was surprised. I just hadn't paid attention. I came by and they told me IHOP's closed. I said, they're closed?
IHOP's been closed since before then.
I just thought they were doing maybe, uh, would do, you know, the, the takeout thing, so.
Well, what we, I mean, and this is just rumor for IHOP, um, is that they've been bought out by another restaurant company and they're reorganizing. That's what I was told.
Really?
Um, I would say other businesses have been doing well. I know, um, Rhonda with Molly Maxine, which is right here downtown, um, she did better her first month closed than she did the previous month open.
Hmm.
Um, because people were really pushing the shop local and she did, um, curbside, she did delivery and she did mailing stuff. Um, so I, I think that it's made everybody refocus and have to concentrate more on their marketing efforts um, and how they can accommodate the customer, which is not always easy. Uh, but they've adapted and they're overcoming. Um, from our side, I, we've sent, I don't know how many emails I've sent. A lot to try to give people all the resources that they need to get through this. Um, they get free Google money, um, and Google ad money, all of those kinda things so that folks have that information to use as much as they can.
Okay.
That's what I answered your question.
Good. How about the tourist traffic?
It's picking up now.
Hmm.
Um, we, we will get May's, um, hotel motel tax this month. I'm predicting that that'll be our worst month. Um, I was honestly amazed by March. It was a lot higher than I thought it was going to be. Um, but I guess March, the early part of March, people were still here and staying in hotels. April was not very good. And May's gonna be a lot worse. Um, but June, the hotels have been, um, pretty much at occupancy. Uh, the La Quinta, um, Fairfield and Holiday Inn Express all had the shutdown that was at, um, the Jessup Mill. They all had that shutdown for three weeks. So that June started picking back up.
Netherlands more observation. I asked the, um, Board of Elections for a copy of the, uh,
T-Splas results by precinct. I wanted to just kinda see[1735.84]
T-Splas results by precinct. I wanted to just kind of see where they were. And, um, while we did pass it, you know, hallelujah, amen. Um, and I totally enjoyed. I know that, you know, the COVID thing hurt us some with our campaign, but we had done some campaigning. But if I may just say it's a little too close for comfort.
It was close.
For our community, a, a growing community like ours that relies on, on, on funds from other sources than, at the lower taxes. So I was telling them, yes, uh, that's one observation. Then we're getting ready to go into e-commerce in, in November, so we're going to have to really, um, buckle down, or to make sure that passes, because we need that for Liberty County to be competitive in the, uh...
What, what was it, the numbers for the?
It was...
Four thousand?
Real, real close?
Not real, real close, but not enough to, to, Long County did a better job.
Eighty percent?
Yeah.
Fifty-two to forty-four.
Maybe something like that, yeah.
That's about right.
Hmm. That was close.
Yeah, yeah.
I never saw that.
And everything voted it down.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think our citizens realize the value of it. And so we got to make sure that, you know, it's kind of like, uh, when you win a campaign, the next thing you start campaigning again for the next time. So, so we got to do, we got to treat T-Splas and Splas like that, so.
And I emailed you guys right back and said we should get together on that.
Have to encourage them. Encourage them. I mean, because the community benefits, and, and, and I'm glad to hear it. And I also heard from some of our commercial estate people that, uh, there's still a lot of interest in our community. Of course, the house building is still going like gangbusters.
She's on board chair, and she didn't stop selling house.
No. And there's still some commercial interest in town, so all that's good. So then, so, so then we got to maximize on that, then, to make sure we educate folk on the value of, of, of what Splas and T-Splas does for us. And e-commerce, because November's right around the corner. Yeah. All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Sure.
Mm-hmm.
Where are you going?
Just some other...
Lease agreement at Liberty Independent Troop Park.
Yes, sir. This is a lease agreement that's been in place with Liberty Independent Troop Park for several years, uh, due to expire August 1st of this year. It was a one-year renewal last year. Um, and just wanted to entertain the board's thought about trying to, uh, extend this. The recommendation is to extend under the same terms and conditions as last year, uh, that, for the sum of $8,000 a year. This, as you know, is all the property on which Stafford Park is located, basically, um, which is under lease from Liberty Independent Troop Corporation.
Joe, who, who heads that group now?
There was, as you know, when Mr. Stewart passed away, he was, um, kind of head of that organization. It's been organized a little bit with Tom Ratcliffe's help. My understanding is this Mr. Johnny Smiley is currently acting as the, um, is the chairman of that.
Okay. All right. Chairman, take the motion to renew the lease agreement.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I would make that.
I'm in.
You're in there.
Hey, hey, I think Eddie beat you.
Commissioner Thibodeau, the second. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. All right. Lease agreement, DFAX.
Yes, sir. Um, as you recall, when the DFAX building was constructed, um...
It's been three years ago.
The State Properties Commission, that actually controls DFAX's rental abilities, uh, contracted with the county to be able to provide, uh, monthly rent to help pay for that building. That building is actually in third-party ownership, uh, doesn't actually belong to the county, um, but it will revert back to the county once the debt is paid in full on the building, uh, by the third party. So this, this actually is a pass-through. Uh, it comes to us, and then is basically transferred to the building payment, um, from the, for the capital for which it was constructed years ago. So again, we do need to, um, entertain, uh, at the same rate. Uh, the state doesn't propose to cut anything or gain anything, um, extend those rental terms for another year.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would make that motion that we approve the, uh, lease agreement with DFAX.
A second.
Motion, a second. We approve the agreement proposed, presented for working with our DFAX friends. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Does that say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, all right. Sure. Fire protection plan?
Mr. Chairman, this is also a consideration of a renewal of an agreement. As you know, uh, the city of Riceboro and Walterville both provide contract service to us for the unincorporated areas, uh, with their fire departments. Um, this is consideration for the Riceboro contract. You did the Walterville, I believe, last month, uh, to do that, so this is up for your consideration. I believe the sum, and I'll confirm that with you, is, uh, $16,000 per year. Uh, they are very responsive, both these agencies, uh, to helping us, uh, with mutual aid and coming out into the county, actually automatic aid to those unincorporated areas.
All right. I think we're used to that.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
Just one question. I was asked this question by one of the council members. Uh, on the outside of this agreement, could they take their fire engines to the shop, to our shop? And I know that would be a separate billing account. Is that possible, or is that something that we could look into?
Certainly, certainly whatever the board desires. We could have a little separate contract for maintenance of their equipment there, if you wanted to do that. Uh, we just need to talk to the shop, make sure they can accommodate it.
Okay. All right, okay.
Glad to do that.
This agreement would just be for fire trucks or for all the other?
They buy fuel from the shop now, anyway, I think.
They do. They actually...
Midway does.
Mid, Midway does. Mid, Midway comes there, and they get fuel from the shop at, at the county rate, and we just turn around and bill them our cost on the fuel. So, um, basically, what we would do, I would think, is if, if the board approves the agreement when it's presented to you, is that we do the same thing for maintenance repairs.
Ju- just for fire trucks?
Just for fire trucks, from, from what I'm understanding.
Like, it's, and this is just for Riceboro fire trucks or Walterville fire trucks?
Well, under the agreement that, that we would do would just be for Riceboro. Of course, if we did it for one, we would need to try to...
Just the others asked?
I think probably...
Address them all.
Do that for others. And, and Commissioner Stevens is certainly aware that, um, one issue could be that, um, those are specialized pieces of equipment to maintain, and there's a lot that the shop can't do to those machines. So the only thing you'd really be talking about, and I'd confirm this and bring it back to you, would be normal maintenance, uh, engine oil replacement, things like that, and filters. Uh, most of the items on those have to go to specialty shop.
And also, Mr. Brown, share with them that one piece of equipment down there is a county piece of equipment at, at the Riceboro station.
Yes, sir. And actually, I'll double-check. We should be doing that one already at the county shop. I will confirm that when we look into this.
Okay.
And I'll bring it back to the board.
I'm a, a little confused now, which is no- nothing new. We, we, it's a fire truck that belongs to Riceboro, for example, and we going to do maintenance, like changing the oil?
I think that's what's being, being contemplated, yes, sir.
And so, and then it would just be for a fee, for a fee?
If it's a specialized piece of equipment, they probably have to take it out.
For other things like...
Other things, yeah, right, right.
Pump certification, pump test, a lot of that, right.
Pump tests are different altogether.
Yeah, they, they, they send it for those. Our shops aren't able to do a lot of hydraulic repair on those machines and all that. But that, I'll bring something back, and the board can actually look at it, and I'll talk to them.
Yeah, we might need to look at that so that we don't overload the county shop if we, you know, pull in those other cities.
Yeah, I mean, it's, um, it's...
That we don't overload.
Every corner in Heinzville, somebody could change your oil, if that's what they wanted. That's all they're going to get from us. They don't need to get that from us, just because of the...
I don't know where they've been taking it previously, but yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, Robert Struckson, I'm sure, Richmond Hill, would probably does that other...
Case of Quik estate and a wrench.
Yeah. But I think before we move into Riceboro...
Like I say, everybody, it was just a question that was asked of me, and that's all I did was brought it to the board.
Yeah, well, we need to look.
No, but I, what I'm saying, Commissioner Stevens, if, if that's all, if they ask the question, and, and we say, you know, we'll check.
Yeah.
And now that we checked, if that's all they're going to get, it seems like they would need a lot more than just someone to change the oil.
Well, there's certain things that has to go out.
Who's going to rotate the tires for them? I mean, you know...
There, there's certain things on those trucks that has to go certain places.
Uh, yeah, right, because, uh, you know, at, at our shop, the public works for the city. We have to send the fire trucks out, but, but we equipped to change the oil for them.
Right.
But, you know, so if, if that's all we're going to do for, for these other cities, you know, they...
I mean, is, is it something that, that they requested?
He asked about it. It was asked about it.
Probably for convenience, I would guess, you know. Rather than take it out of the county, you can take it right over there and...
Well, it's, it's convenient unless they in line behind all the other stuff that the county has, and it ain't convenient.
Yeah, yeah.
But Jiffy Lube is...
That's far from Riceboro.
Yeah.
But it's far from Riceboro.
He'll check it out for us.
But if, but if you in line, um...
Yeah, he'll check it out for us. You're right, we don't overload them.
We'll, and check out the load, too, because, like you say, not, and not against anything that's been requested. We just need to be cognizant others may follow, and I'll, I'll get a reading from the shop.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, while we're there, just a few minutes, no, I can't remember if we're trying, are we still looking at trying to get them a building?
The shop.
The shop?
Yeah.
You working on?
Well, that was one of the things on my report tonight, was to see if we want to go ahead and set a little, uh, may, maybe...
Might help that load.
No, you're okay. May, maybe to, uh, uh, allow us to at least go ahead and get some architectural things for, together for y'all.
Okay.
Look at, and say...
All right.
Chairman, we got a motion?
We don't, I don't think.
No.
We didn't do it?
No, we didn't. We didn't approve that.
Fire protection, we didn't, okay. Oh, we got up on the other thing.
We're going to wait to see if the load, I think.
But just, but we didn't vote for...
This is, this is just a contract with them to provide the service for us.
Okay, I got, okay, I, I, okay, you're right.
I thought it was... Ma'am, that's your calls.
All right. Chairman, take a motion for the fire protection contract.
Y'all raising your hand?
He said he's doing Robert's rule. He needed to make a motion.
Chairman, take a motion.
All right. I'm, I'm, I make a motion that we accept the, uh, fire protection contract with Riceboro.
Yeah, second.
Second.
Verbal second. All in favor, raise your right hand now, raise your...
And this is just for Riceboro, not for Walterville? That's, that would be a separate one?
You actually did one.
I already did this already.
Did that last month. Okay.
Mr. Chair, with me down here?
I tell you.
Y'all need me back up there, man.
Oh, no. Election Board Department.
We're, we're ready.
You ready?
No, y'all not.
Yes, sir. All we have to do is, 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 is know that, that there's a vacancy. We ready. All right. Uh, Mr. Chairman, we, um, the committee met, and, um, by majority decision, we are, um, going to bring before the board the appointment of Ms. Sharon Hopkins-Terry to the Board of Elections.
Okay. The, the, uh, appointment committee has recommended Ms. Sharon, uh, Hopkins-Terry for the Board of Elections. Could somebody turn that into a motion?
Should I make a motion that we accept Ms. Sharon Hopkins-Terry to the, uh, election board?
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? Thank you, Commissioner, what I heard you. All in favor, say aye. Raise your right hand.
I thought he was sleeping.
All right. Ms. Sharon Hopkins-Terry's appointed. It's good to have her.
Yes, sir.
Uh, all right, Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir. Um, just a couple of things. Uh, I guess first, uh, as Commissioner Thibodeau mentioned, uh, we do have a shop building that is, that was approved as part of the splash, and so it has accumulated funds now. Uh, we had some preliminary discussions early on before we put an amount in the splash to talk about how much one might cost. Um, Rusty McCall, um, who has helped us with some of the fire stations, actually accompanied us on that trip, uh, Mr. Wells and us. So we'd like to see if we couldn't go ahead and at least, um, get with Mr. Wells, um, try to go ahead and, and work on developing some architectural drawings for y'all to consider, um, to get, you know, obviously get going on that building.
Yes, sir. I agree. We need to move forward.
It's been, it's been pending for a little while.
Sure has.
It has.
Bad shape, miscap...
It is. And there's a lot to consider on the ground down there. So, um, I'll go ahead if it's okay and engage, um, Mr. McCall. I mentioned it to him. Uh, he's been kind of hanging on there a little bit. Um, actually, may, may call upon any of you that want to go to try to go look at a couple of facilities, uh, one in Effingham and one in Statesboro that's been constructed recently, uh, to look at that as part of that. So I'll get going on it.
I might, would be able to go.
You think, do you think that guy sitting next to you might know how to get to Statesboro?
He might. I don't know. It goes to the north side.
It's the other side.
Uh, the other thing, uh, to you, Mr. Chairman, is, uh, we talked a little bit about this at your last meeting, and that was, um, the board's thoughts on trying to hold fall programming at the Recreation Department. Specifically, that would include after-school program, youth football and cheerleading, youth soccer, and other instructional programs. You asked me to, uh, actually talk to a couple of folks. One is, uh, I did reach out to Dr. Davis on his thoughts. Um, he politely, in a, in a nice, uh, I'd say, uh, political way, I think he'd appreciate for me to say that, uh, said that probably wasn't a good thing right now, uh, with the face-to-face contact in football, uh, and in soccer and some of those fall things that we're doing, uh, that he really saw no way to get in a huddle without getting inside of six feet.
Right.
Or getting mask-to-mass with physical contact, uh, with sweat and everything. Uh, so his recommendation, uh, be it unofficial, would be to say, "I'd be scared of that." Uh, the other thing is we looked at CDC guidelines in doing that, and of course, his basis was really off of some of those guidelines, uh, for youth sports, which really, uh, they say at the time of a peak, uh, probably is not a good thing to do, uh, for those. So, um, while I think we all are supporters of the recreation programs and we do a great job with them, that is, those are my findings for the board to consider.
Good. All right. And, uh, Mr. Chair, real quick. Mr. Brown, uh, when do we have to make the, the, uh, final decision on fall programs?
That was, Mr. Martin, they, Mr. Martin usually starts registration the last week of July.
Right, that's what I was...
Yes, sir. Certainly, that's the reason we brought it back tonight, uh, for a final decision.
Right now, right?
Do we need to make a, a decision tonight?
We really do. Especially, you know, to be able to...
Don't need to. I would make a motion that we, uh, postpone or delay the...
Postpone is a good word. Thank you.
Uh-huh. The recreation, uh, fall programs until further notice, or?
That's awesome.
I'll second that one.
They come out every once in a while.
Motion that, uh...
Second.
That we postpone the, the fall programs?
Joey?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I, I had talked with Jimmy also, um, you know, the swimming pool has been open, and hopefully, we're going to be able to keep that thing going until the week before school. But he did say that a lot of the lifeguards, uh, came from Fort Stewart, and they are school-age folks, so, um, we're going to do everything we can to keep it open as long as we can, but understand that when the time comes, um, we're trying to give everybody a heads up when it's going to shut down for, and it usually does in, in July, but since there hasn't been any other programs, we're going to hold it out as long as we can on that. But when the time comes, we're going to have to pull the trigger on it, okay?
Yes, sir. Did you vote?
We have not voted.
No. All in favor of the motion? Thank you. All right.
Mr. Brown?
Aye. Yes, sir.
On the, uh, East End, the John McCava complex down there, do we see any intentions of start renting, renting it out again?
Well, so, you know, the only things that you have not opened up are those interior complexes. Um, John McCava complex, rental of any of the gyms or rooms of the gyms and things like that, because it's just an indoor activity.
Indoactivity, okay.
Yes, sir. But that's totally up to the board.
We're in no hurry.
Yeah.
We're in no hurry.
Mr. Chairman, I had a, a question, too, that someone had posted on the live stream here, about when we may open up for, um, citizens to come to our meetings if they mask up or have the six-foot?
Yeah, so, you know, that was...
Is this a possibility?
Yeah, a couple of other things. So, is that, um, I wanted to see, the board protocol has been that, uh, only folks that are on the agenda are able to speak with, with two people, uh, that accompany them. So, um, I, I wanted to see what, what that was, what we were going to do there. Now, you know, obviously, to six or 10-foot distance, it becomes a little bit problematic, as we found out tonight, about how would you say we're only going to let the first 10 in, or we're gonna, you know, that, that's a little bit problematic, but it's something we can certainly try to gauge and do. It's whatever the board, whatever the board desires. We'd have to, I think what we'd have to do is put an occupancy level on. We sure can, and we can actually, um, tape the seats that are available, uh, for use. And once those are full, they're full, and nobody else will be allowed in, use. And once those are full, they're full and nobody else will be allowed in if the board desires to do that with masks.
Mr. Brown.
Man, I'm over-
I got a question on that. Let's see, I heard you say, like you said, you let the first 10 in. And maybe somebody down on that agenda, that someone else is coming and they're the fifth person and they're not here.
Yeah, that's true.
How you, how?
That, that's, that's, that's a problem. Uh, I didn't really think about that. That's a problem because they would have first right to be here and then you'd have to try to have a marshal to excuse people so they could get in. That's a, that's a little bit of an issue. Yeah.
Well, we might would have-
With all due respect, that's not an issue.
Reserved for-
We have a lot.
I think we could have reserved for those who may be coming for the meeting.
And most people that come, they, they leave.
Or they need RSVP or something. If they're, if they have something on the agenda, they need RSVP because of our concerns about having too many in the-
Yes, and I, and I agree. One, one thing I'd already made a note about and I started trying to do, uh, for this meeting, we're all kinda moving around here, is that, um, i- if you have an item that's placed on the agenda, if I could get who that speaker's gonna be. And, cause what I end up doing is, that's where I was this afternoon, in fact, down there with the deputy saying, "Okay, this is a speaker plus two." So it's whoever the speaker designates. And so it takes, you know, we'll have to really, I need to engage. If we're gonna do that, I really need to engage somebody, a staff person, to be here to help with that.
Right.
Make sure people come in and out and do that, which is, which is not a problem if we need to do that.
Let's, let's think about it.
Maybe another month or so?
Yeah.
See how it looks like.
Yeah. I, I, I just feel that we need to give another month or so.
Okay.
So see where we are at that time.
Okay.
Great. So anybody who's on the agenda will be allowed to come in. They have access through Facebook Live, but I, I agree, being in person is a different feeling. But right now that we're dealing with, we have to err on the side of safety and caution. So let's see where we are, um, mid-month, um, August.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, one last thing for me is, uh, it, this may not be our issue. It may be a Board of Election issue, but it's been brought to my attention. We have some citizens in the county that has to travel actually right at 16 miles to a voting precinct. And, uh, they're trying to look at a closer location to kinda cut that in half. So just wanna put that out, out there. 16 miles is quite a distance in this county to, you know, one way to have to actually have to vote.
Uh, when is the last time we, we took a look at our, uh, our voting precinct?
Oh, boy. They, they moved a couple for the last election because of availability. Then you got to look at the whole, you know.
The whole thing again.
Oh, it's, it's, it's really, uh,
All right, right.
Uh, but I think what I wanna do though, I hadn't thought about it. I did read in the Coastal Carrier where they had, uh, they tested the machines Monday or?
They do Q and A the state, does that, yes, sir.
And, and I'm pleased, that's what I hear at the office, but probably, um, Mr. Brown, let's schedule Mrs. Uh, Ms. Martin and Rhonda to come.
We did. I think, Mr. Chairman, we, um, you had requested at one of the meetings that they come back in August.
Come back, yeah.
They should be back before you.
Okay.
And Commissioner Thibodeau, the Board of Elections actually,
Right.
uh, you know, was charged with that. And then those voting precincts had to be approved by, by justice.
Right.
By state and justice. Um, so, but-
It's an involved process.
It's time to, yeah, it's time to-
Right, that's, right. Time to relook at that.
Yeah.
I mean, if it haven't been done in 15 years and then, you know, with the population switch and everything.
Sure.
I mean, this is the first time I've heard that someone had to drive 16 miles to vote.
That's, that's- It's been that way for many years.
I mean, that's, that's not, that's not, and-
And you know, what they, what they tried to, what my understanding is what they tried to do, and, and I agree, a coastal location is, is needed, is that since we don't have buildings in that area, um, the, they go to churches.
Right.
See if any churches are, are available to do that. So we can-
We do have a facility about half the distance.
We do, if they're willing to, that's correct.
About half the distance.
Yes, sir. So I'll pass that on to the Board of Elections and remind them about the August.
Okay.
Uh, the last thing, sir, is that we know last time, we do have a, uh, determination of a dangerous animal, uh, that's been made here in the county. It's about the third one that's been made pursuant to the state statute. Uh, the owner of the animal's been notified and has requested a hearing. Uh, so it, it's necessary, it's necessary for the board to designate a dangerous dog review board. Um, I'd like to recommend that five people be on there, uh, total. Uh, basically, they're gonna review matters in the case and then either vote to uphold or make some other change to, uh, the dangerous dog ruling on that. People I'd like to recommend, uh, for board consideration are Dr. Rachel Peoples, who's a local veterinarian, uh, Ms. Sandra Frye, who runs the Liberty Humane Shelter, uh, Mr. Stephen Andrews, that works for the Department of Public Health, um, Mike Hodges, Public Safety Director, and myself for that board. And again, the board only meets to hear hearings of appeals for dangerous dog determinations. Uh, in, in the life of the statute, which has been running out for about five years, this is the third dangerous dog determination. State law's pretty clear on, on that determination.
And that, that board has a final say?
That board does have the final say. Yes, sir.
That'll, you need a motion?
Uh, if, if, if the board's so inclined and would, that would be great. Uh, that, we had to go ahead under state law and schedule that appeal, which is, uh, week after next.
How long will this vote stay in effect?
It, it'll only meet when necessary, as long as the people are willing to serve. Um, and only meet when a dangerous dog determination is appealed. We've had two that have not been appealed because, without getting real long-winded, the state statute's very onerous on requirements. Uh, if you've got a, if, if you wanna keep a dangerous dog, you have to buy, uh, a certain amount of insurance. You have to buy liability.
Right.
Yeah.
Remember that?
It's pretty strong.
That was pretty expensive though, wasn't it?
Pretty expensive and pretty strong.
Yeah, most insurance won't cover homeowners.
All right.
Yes, sir, if you would consider a motion, I could note about it.
Motion to approve the nominees for-
We'll move, Mr. Chairman, on that. Motion, second.
Motion and a second, that we approve the, uh, names presented for animal control. Any further discuss? All in favor, raise your right hand. I say aye.
Oh, Eddie Ma.
There you go. All right, motion passes. All right. Things for the good order.
Mr. Chairman, just have something real quick. Uh, I'd be remiss if, if I didn't say happy birthday to my mother and also happy birthday to my daughter. This is one of the most expensive days of the year. People think it's Christmas, July 6th.
Happy birthday to those.
Just for, for the record.
Hey, Joey.
He's watching.
Joey.
Yes, sir.
Did we ever, um, get anything on that, uh, pavilion at Homestown, you know, about enclosing it?
We have, we have not.
Okay.
We have not gotten that yet. In fact, um, had some conversation this week with Mr. Martin about his upcoming projects for the board, which included those handicap things.
Okay.
And I reminded him of that.
Okay.
So that we could bring some material to you.
Okay, okay. All right, Chairman, motion to adjourn.
No movement, Chairman.
Second. All in favor?
I'll take care of it. I'm going to.
Good, have a good evening, Commissioner Walden.
Thank you, sir.